Whenever you read.
Okay. Call this meeting of the planning and zoning commission to order. Do we have a determination of form?
Yes, we do have a form with four members physically present and we have Wendy Little attending via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Gio, would you mind reading the public statement, the hearing?
Yes, absolutely. We have a public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding an application for a special use permit for applicant West Texas Delicacies LLC. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for the purpose of obtaining an alcohol license or permit from the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission to sell beer and wine in a newly established deli. The property in question is located in 801 East Holland Avenue and record property owners Mesa Holland LLC.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from previous board meeting? Do I have a motion to accept as is or to make any changes?
No, second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from previous board meeting as is, please indicate by saying aye. Or opposed, say nay, eyes have it. Okay, discussion. I had, we had asked Gio to send us a copy of the ordinances regarding gaming establishments at Alpine. The commission expressed some concern from the last meeting. Wanted to look over it. So I will open it to to commissioners. Michael, if you want to give any questions or concerns about it or.
I would generally just state that my concern is just having one of these businesses as potentially having one of these businesses with that number of slot machines and in a hotel or motel, that's where it is. I have not done a whole lot of research on this, but when I first saw this before the meeting came up, I did look and see just sort of what other cities had issues with these sort of establishments and there seemed to be lots of arrests, illegal gambling and things like that. That's prudent at this point to bring up, but there we go.
And as in my and I think that one of the things that we had, I've discussed previously in another meeting was limiting the the number of slot machines or gaming machines. And it was presented to council and they believed that the limit that we presented, which was four, was too few. So they sent it, they rejected that. And so what we would like to do is, we do think currently there are too many, there's, you know, there are too many. I think it's because it's an unlimited amount of machines they can have. Alpine has a rule where there, we can have no more than four establishments. Each establishment can have an unlimited amount of machines. And per our understanding from the original, I guess this is brought up like last summer when that they, we, at first, I think they thought that there was a limit of eight machines per establishment. And we had a meeting that we called a meeting in June, I think it was June, to discuss this. And we, and I read through the ordinance and realized that there, that there was an unlimited amount of machines. Meeting was canceled last minute. And so that is the the main discussion pieces is limiting the gaming machines. Because that we can't do anything else. We can't that, you know, that the council has already approved four establishments. We currently have three, is it three?
Two.
Two.
Two applications that will be considered next.
Okay, so what we would like to do is make a reasonable suggestion for a number of machines.
Isn't there like, I'm sorry, isn't there like a number of occupants that can be in a place?
There should be and, but I mean, I don't know what that is per.
We currently do not have a fire marshal, so it'd be hard to make that decision. But technically, that would be probably the smartest way to do it by zoning is based off of fire safety. So just like an occupancy load would have, the machines would be based off of the occupancy of the building. So they can't have them crammed in there. They'd be based off of being able to wheelchair through and having that type of, you know, that would be the smartest way to go. I don't know if you'd be able to limit it by number legally. It's like telling somebody they can only sell so many types of shoes or
Right.
You know, I think that that's maybe the wrong approach possibly.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, fire codes are always local, right? They're governed locally from my, in my, in like dealing with other cities and so.
I don't know, I think we have a new fire marshal or somebody that's in the city. I met him recently at PD that maybe could help us with that, figuring out the square footage and how many it'd be, you know, recommended by fire safety. But that's probably the smartest way to go with it, I mean.
So right now, the two of their establishments are not open, correct? You would, they would need an occupancy certification to be in there, correct, to even open it?
Two of them are inactive, so they're not considered operating within the city. There's only two operating right now.
Which ones are those, is that?
The one on Murphy, 204 West Murphy, where Los Palos used to be, and then the one over by the Oyo.
How many machines do each establishment have?
They submit, because right now they're not monitored on, based off of a minimum or maximum. They submit their renewals every year of their new machines. They give us their stickers. And it's just they submit their new machines. They don't have any max or minimum, so they just submit them. I'm, right now, I think one has like thirty five or and I'm a little short, something in that category, like thirty five, thirty six.
So could we make a recommendation to council to, to evaluate the square footage of each space? And, you know, because I know that there's, there are, like in other cities, you know, there's a limit, you know, per square footage of how many people can be in a space at the same time.
I thought we had that.
And then like, well, they should. I mean, I'm surprised that they don't. I didn't know they didn't.
Yeah, I had, I don't, we don't currently have anybody working with the city that I know of that's for fire safety other than our building official, which I can get with him and ask him if there's anything that he could recommend.
Oh, did you hire a building official?
The third party that.
Okay.
I can ask him if he has any recommendations. They do have equine operated establishments there too, so maybe they have a way that they regulate that over there.
Okay.
But currently, we don't have anything saying that they can't cram them all in there. And technically, they should, they should be monitored. We should have somebody inspecting them. We should have obvious pathways, just like in the other business. So I think that's probably the best approach. Obviously, if they get a bigger building, they can put more in there.
Right, well, I, what are your thoughts? I mean, I would like to make a recommendation that we limit it regardless and then make a recommendation that we have a fire marshal that actually establishes a load occupancy for each building.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, can we do that?
Sure, we can look into that. That's the whole point of this, to look into it and make the recommendation. Now, I've spoken to everyone all over town and I haven't come across anyone who thinks that this business brings any benefit to the community.
Right.
You know, and number one concerns I always hear from them are illegal activity, drug sales, maybe the type of people that are attracted to that.
Yes, I have the same thing.
And it seems like we're just kind of bending over for this type of business. Is it, is it within our purview or is it a possibility to make a recommendation to the council that this type of business? Like, some people have asked, why don't we just kind of ban this type of business within city limits?
So when this issue first came up, David Hale was here, Sandy Wilson was our city attorney. And she basically provided, you know, legal advice that we weren't able to legally ban them. The only thing that we could do is regulate them. So that's where the whole ordinance came into play initially. In 2021 April, I believe, we updated the, the fees initially. The, the first ordinance had laid out an annual permit fee, thousand dollars about. And so that, the updated ordinance last year updated that to a three thousand dollar fee. I think it's thirty one twenty five. So I mean, essentially, we need to allow them, we can just limit or, you know, pro regulations. The council thought, in my opinion, that four was too conservative. So I think maybe a higher number would be okay.
Right.
I also reached out to our current city attorney, Rock Ponton, a while back when we were trying to implement the first limit. And he didn't have any issues with the limit. So I don't think it's a, I mean, I think we can certainly limit the machines in the in the building to like, let's say, ten or fifteen or whatever you want to recommend.
Now, can you, can you have a, because there's a registration fee of three thousand dollars, right? A permit fee. Can, is there, are we able to have a permit fee for each machine?
We get taxed on the machines. They already get taxed.
Is it?
Based off of how many machines. We are trying to update, I know, I think it's in the, I was trying to find it. To change the ordinance so that it talks about getting their special use permit, because that's not in there. And that's the process we're doing right now. We're already doing it by having that separated from the three thousand dollar licensing fee. So we would add in there that they would pay three hundred and fifty dollars for the special use permit. And that would go through the planning, zoning and council. It's nonrefundable. And they have, because there's a lot of paperwork involved, even if they get disapproved or they have to get a background check and they don't pass or whatever it is. The city does a lot of work just to do that process. And so that's something that we were suggesting as the city to put into the ordinance is a clarification of those fees. So they do the three hundred and fifty dollar special use permit. And that does the process with us and then goes to council. And then if they get approved, then they would pay their licensing application fee. Which is separate.
Okay.
So that's what we wanted to add in, because we're doing that process already and it's not separated from that. And the, the wording in here is, doesn't include that information. And for us to have a clear ordinance that kind of breaks it down, it makes sense. It makes sense to put that in. It's already, we're already having them do a special use permit and going through this process. And if they don't, like the last one got denied, this, we would do all of that for nothing because they're not going to pay their licensing fee or application fee. And we should have a special use permit in there.
So do the other two have the special use permit?
They did have a special use permit. We want to add it into the ordinance so it's clear that they have to pay that application fee regardless if it's approved or denied.
The special use.
Special use permit. And then if they're approved, they would go to the administrative office and pay their licensing fees.
Special use permit of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Because the licensing and the tax is separate, is completely separate in the permitting process. And it doesn't, it doesn't break that down in our ordinance. And so that's one thing that we wanted to add in and for permitting, a separate front of the application licensing fee.
Do you all accept permit fees in cash?
We do. Cash check, cashier's check, and we don't do credit card or right now, the machine's broken.
Ask a clarification, what is the special use permit? How is that different from the registration fee?
So the special use permit is the process of going through planning and zoning. It's, if you look up the description of its conditional use or special use permit, it's a, a business that doesn't fit like the, like the basic requirements. It's a little.
It has unique.
Unique.
Operating.
So like alcohol sales would be in that same category. It's a unique characteristic compared to like just being a retail store. So that would have to go through a zoning process. And because the equine operated business can't be within three hundred feet of a church or a school, that's as unique to the zone. So we have to go through that process. So they should be paying for that permitting process to send out all the letters, to do all of the, the, us getting together and discussing it and putting it through, doing the DPS. PD has to touch it, all of their employees have to go through a background check. All of that is through the permitting process.
Okay.
If we didn't charge the initial three hundred and fifty dollar fee, then if the special use permit got denied, we posted all the letters, we did all the work and basically the applicant didn't pay us anything. Did it all for free. So that three hundred and fifty covers all the administrative expenses, regardless of whether they get approved or not. And that's a, basically, the three hundred and fifty is a standard special use or conditional use permit fee that we charge for every conditional use or special use permit.
So I did have another question about, sorry, of, of this particular one on the east side of town. Isn't the hotel adjacent to Sol Ross property? And would that fall under, within three hundred feet of a school?
Are you talking about the Oyo motel?
The, the next one, is it?
Last meeting you all considered the special use permit, it would have been across the street from Pizza Hut.
Right.
That one was denied.
Okay, okay.
So you all, you recommended it be denied and council denied it as well.
But the one that's currently, the Oyo, that, that's not.
No, that's not.
Yeah, okay.
That's too far away.
Right. But would the other one, would that have been denied just because it was adjacent to Sol Ross?
Yeah, within three hundred feet of any church or school. So we have to do an actual pin, you can go on Google Maps and pin it, how the measurements to see how far away it is.
But I'm pretty sure like Sol Ross owns that property. Very well, I would not need, so.
And that's part of the zoning, I mean, that's what we should be looking into and checking to see if it's in the right area.
Well, then the one on Murphy is close to the church then, right? It would be close to our Lady of Peace.
Generally, our city blocks are around three hundred feet.
Okay.
So since this is just a discussion, we can't, can we make a recommendation to council from this? Or do we have to put it on the agenda for next? Yeah, for next time to make any recommendations.
But yeah, this was basically meant for you all to tell us what you want.
Right.
So we can draw it up and have it ready in your package for the next meeting. And then you can make your, I mean, and you can still change it at that, at that point as well. But I think it's just to kind of see what you wanted to do and what you wanted the recommendations to look like.
Right, well, I mean, this is, I have any on the fire codes. I didn't realize that we didn't have, that would, I mean, that's, you know, affects a lot of other.
I mean, that's something that to take into consideration for the, how the ordinance is written. If you said X amount of machines are permitted within a equine operated business unless it is against the fire code. You know, if it's a building like the Oyo, the one next to it was very, very small. So if it, if, if they cram a whole bunch of, however, I'm not going to give you the number, whatever, whatever you guys choose. That they can have that, that's the amount that you're allowing to provide unless otherwise it becomes a safety concern by fire.
Right. And, and then just to go back, David Hale, who is the former building official, looked through an original, a revision, I guess, one of the original revisions when they were writing the ordinance. And his memory was it listed eight machines. But in the final draft, that was missing.
It got changed.
Right, it got changed. I don't know who took it out, how did it get taken out? Did it just miraculously disappear? Was it just a, who knows?
We could never really figure that.
Right, so, so the reason why I'm bringing that up is the eight machine number was what they originally believed to have recommended. Then we, the planning and zoning in the discussion, we thought, well, maybe eight's too broad. Let's reduce it to four, but four got kicked back. So maybe we make the recommendation to go back to eight.
Or you can split it, maybe six.
Yeah. I mean, I.
With the maximum number of four businesses.
Unless, unless the fire code. Unless the fire codes.
Do you otherwise?
Right, thank you.
So six is what?
Thought as eight. Yeah, you know, only because it's, we've been going, dealing with this for months.
So let's go with six.
Okay.
Unless, and something to the effect, unless fire codes preclude that number.
Does any, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does anybody know how many machines are in there now? And like, if, if we went for the fire code thing, like, are these places just ram packed with people already? Or is there?
So I know one establishment that just closed had up to twenty five. Because we received the tax payments here. On the other ones, I don't think they have that much, but it's hard to say.
And do you have like an S, like a square footage? By any chance, not that you remember it off the top of your head, but are you able to look at the square footage for the one?
Permitting, yeah.
Yeah.
Two oh four West Murphy, I believe, has like thirty six machines in there. Something in that. But they do have those two separate rooms, so I don't know how much square, I'm looking at the square footage on that.
And all the machines, sorry to be kind of ignorant about this, but I've never been in one of those establishments. Are all the machines the same or is it like video games? They have like a variety of different themes or? So if we cut them down to six or eight or whatever, is that like eight of all the same exact type of machine or is, does that ma, does that matter?
I believe that they are different with different games and, you know, they're like lit up of lights. I've actually never been in one myself, but I've driven by with the door open, seen that they, they look different from the street.
I've been in there for inspections, they're different. They sell some of the same ones, like duplicates, the ones that are the most popular and then they have different ones.
I think if we tell them six when we just told them four, they're just going to kick it back again.
I, I mean, I, you know, think that four was too conservative in their, in their opinion in the city councils. When they had a lot of feedback or public comments in the public hearing section from owners and people who frequent them. You know, I just think that they thought four was too conservative is what I got from that, so.
They, yeah, the reason I, I listened to that meeting, it was, their thoughts were, they couldn't operate a business with only four. Right?
Business, you're taking, you're limiting what they can make.
Okay, well, this is just a working.
Right.
So let's stick with what we asked.
Okay, and that is six.
Six. And then, of course, whatever the fire regulations are, they might limit it or, you know, expand it. And then we can go over it again at the next meeting. So, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I, I, I mean, I think that, do we vote on that or do we just?
No.
And yeah, I think, I mean, eight I thought was.
And I can, I can put whatever, you know, since y'all are saying six now.
They have thirty six. If they, if one of these building places have thirty six machines. And so, and then we're going to tell them it needs to be six and they're going to lose thirty. I mean.
I could go ahead and use the six figure if you all would like. And, you know, the next meeting when it's an action item, if you wanted to change that, you can certainly move to.
When, when are the next? Because you said there's two in the wings that are weighed in to apply. What, will those come in next month? See, this is the thing. If we make, well, it's still, we're not going to be able to vote until, vote on, vote on this until our next meeting anyway. So if they, if next meeting, we have two equine operated machines to vote on. And, and then we're also voting at the meeting to, to limit the machines.
So then why don't we skip next month's meeting? In other words, we'll go ahead and listen to the petitions for the two new businesses and then at the following month, we can discuss this further. If you don't think it's right discussing it in front of them.
No, I mean, that, that part didn't, I don't have that, I was hoping to have, have a, a limit implemented before the next.
Yeah, I really don't think that'd be possible, just because it would have to be changed by ordinance.
Right.
Would require the two readings, et cetera. To do like a special meeting or something. I think it's probably better to wait. I mean, unless y'all wanted to do a special meeting, but I know, you know.
I don't know, how do y'all feel about a special meeting?
It's important enough to do a special meeting. I mean, if we did it, you know.
Next Monday? Can we do?
We have, we have, there should be four of us. I mean, that's the, I know you're traveling.
I should be back Monday.
But if, but if you're traveling, there's still two more that hopefully can be here.
As long as we have a foreign person.
Right.
Okay, so let's have a special meeting for next Monday then.
Okay.
Okay. At five thirty?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be fine.
And at the special meeting, can we also get information just on fire regulations and how that impacts, could possibly impact the number of machines in a building? At least, you know, we'll have an educated, be able to talk about this in an educated manner. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And any other regulations that you, Dean, we should know about?
I mean, I, yeah, because I thought we had a occupancy certification or permit.
Yeah, that, well, that depends on the square footage for each building.
So we need that too.
Yeah, can we also get that, the rules regarding square foot, you know, occupancy as is determined?
Occupancy loads a little bit different than, like in a grocery store, for example, your aisles have to be so wide. And that's kind of like where you're going with the machines, like you can't have them so that if somebody's sitting in them and there's a fire, they can't get out. And so, of course, your per square foot, you have an occupancy load. And you get that based off of an equation in the square footage. But as far as the layout of when you walk into a building and a way of escape, you can't cram which machines in there just to get as many out of that building as you can. There would have to be a clearance. And is it disabled for disability, people in a wheelchair, those types of things would have to be accessible.
So was that looked into? I mean, I'm just curious, at this one, the one I'm looking, that may have thirty five or thirty six.
The, the one on Murphy was open before I was working with the city. But I know that the previous building official was involved in all of those inspections, which he did have the qualifications to do the fire. So for, for that, I would assume yes, but I don't, can't say yes or no, because I wasn't here for the first inspection.
Was that David Hale or the one?
Could we get that information at the special meeting?
If it's, if it's in the files, I don't know if he kept files of those inspections and what he had recommended, but I can look at the original.
If it's there, yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this matter?
One more.
Okay.
But I think what we voted on is they added, one of this meetings in the last few months, that establishment. Did that establishment add machines, right? I've got to go back and look at minutes. But they, they started out with a limited number and I think they've put in, they added machines. It's one of the ordinances we may have voted on. For previous, I know I've seen minutes, maybe it was talked about in council, but I, I've looked at.
You know, David Hale said that there should have been a limit in the ordinance. I, I don't know how it got changed.
Right.
I personally worked with them very closely and I never saw a limit in the original ordinance. And then in the update, the only thing that changed was the fee, the three thousand dollars.
All right.
So there's never been a limit.
Okay, that's what, all right, so that's, that's important.
And what was it before it mysteriously got disappeared?
Eight.
I see, okay. Okay, I got it now, all right.
Right.
All right. We can move on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's move on then to action item. We have before us, approve a recommendation to city council, an application for a special use permit for applicant West Texas Delicacies LLC. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for the purpose of obtaining an alcohol license permit from. Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission to sell beer and wine in a newly established deli. Property in questions located eight oh one East Holland Avenue and property record property owner is Mesa Holland LLC. Is there anyone here who's representing? Okay. Would you like to come up and speak us? Yeah, just, has the podium been moved?
It has. It's for the council meeting tomorrow night and we're having elections in here tomorrow.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry about that.
What would you like to hear?
Just give us a little bit of why you're applying for this and how it's going to impact your business and whatever else you'd like to tell us about it.
So, so Far West Texas Cattle Company is on one side of the building and we are arranged to table beef subscription business and, and retail. And so we're taking that beef and we're using it on the deli. So the, the ownership is myself and then the woman who used to be the executive chef at the century. And I don't know what else to tell you. We'd like to be able to serve beer and wine. We're a lunch establishment, so we close, we're from ten thirty to five thirty are our hours.
Okay. Does anyone here have any questions regarding this? I'd like to start with you.
My only question was that I know that I, I saw the parking and I know where you have, you have them labeled the one on Holland where it says one, parking one, two and three.
Is there, did the, did the, the Google thing that for the fence, is that in this packet?
Yeah.
Do you have a picture of the, so we have we have the parking on, so we have four slots right here. So what, the, the second thing that I, I don't know if we talk about it this many or not, but see this right here. So this house, this used to be the front yard for this house. So this, and that used to be their sidewalk. So what we'd like to do is put a fence here and have picnic tables outside. Which is a separate issue. And that will leave us four parking spaces here. And then we, we have two here. And then, then the, you know, the building goes all the way back. So we have two back here. So, and then, and then across the street, you know, that's available for parking too, right? And then I have made a request to the corporate people at Little Caesars that I could rent their parking spaces because their business is more in the evening. And my, I close at five thirty. So, so there, I think, I hope that we'll be able to come to a deal where we are able to use some of theirs as well.
Well, they have a large parking.
I know, and there's never.
They really do. My only concern was when the eighteen wheelers are coming down on from South One eighteen and they make that turn.
Yes.
Like I can see the first car being taken out, but not the other two.
Yeah, I don't know actually why it's legal because it's a legal parking space, but it's not a very safe parking space to park right in front of there. So I, I actually agree with that.
That was my only concern. I mean, only because I, I see them quite often on my way home and I was just like.
Yeah.
But and it's only the first parking space, the other.
That's exactly right. If they'll pull up a little bit more, but it's an actual legal parking space. So, but if, if they pull up a little more, it's better. But, but it's really the eighteen wheeler's that are going a little too fast are the ones that seem to have, if, if if you go slow, it's not as bad, but it's definitely going to pay attention because it's a tricky turn.
I know. Definitely. I mean, aside from that, I think it's a good idea.
Oh, thank you.
I've heard great things about it. I'm excited to have it.
Good. We're excited.
I've been there. Yeah, I was there for lunch today. It's just a few blocks away from my house. So and the, the interior is really quite small. So there's not a whole lot of seating.
There's not a lot of seating. You have three tables.
I think it's really an issue with too much parking. I think probably a lot of people just walk up there.
Yeah.
Imagine.
And you're okay with?
Oh, yes.
Their liquor license?
Yeah, I think it's having a small little lunch deli where you can have a beer if you want, or a glass of wine for lunch would be pretty fantastic.
Okay. I was there this afternoon and so I saw the parking also. And my only concern was this parking space you have here, which was the front yard of this house.
Right.
The only concern I had was that the ramp was too narrow.
Right, you mean, how you get in there?
Yeah. It was, it was way too narrow, especially there were two other cars. I was the third one. And to back out, I had to do pretty much ninety degree angle to get out. And so that was, that was my only concern.
But that would be the case no matter what we've done. That just is the case.
Yeah. Other than that, I mean, yeah, parking is, is what it is.
Yeah. And you know, parking, there's also a, an alley on the other side that goes all the way down. That's parking. But, but it is a problem and I do want to solve it. So.
But other than that, I mean, location's great. That was my only concern. And did Little Caesars give you an idea of when they would be back?
The existing management team doesn't have the ability to make that decision. So someone at corporate has to make that decision. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
So still at the early stages.
Correct.
I see. Okay.
I don't, I don't know if this is fair, but there's also, I'd like to approach the people who own that. There's like a eye doctor or used to be an eye doctor over there because they have parking space that's rarely used. I just don't know who to approach.
That's Ward Plaza.
I'm sorry, who?
Ward Plaza.
Okay.
We can discuss that after.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's not official business. But anyway, I, I, I understand it's a problem and I definitely want to solve it.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Any other concerns anyone here has regarding this?
Wendy. I have no concern. The parking is, like you said, it just is what it is. And hopefully they can get more, but I think it's a great idea to have the deli there with the beer and wine option.
Okay. Well, if there's no other further discussion, can I get a motion to approve this?
I will move that we approve the recommendation to city council for the special use permit for West Texas Delicacies.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please indicate it by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, last item, board member comments. Like to start over here if you have anything you'd like to say or bring before the board's attention.
Not at this moment, thank you.
And I don't have any comments.
Okay.
I just want to welcome Michael.
Thanks to be here. I travel a lot for work. A lot.
I do too. So wherever you go.
Okay, and Wendy, do you have anything to say?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Feel better.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we will meet again next Monday at five thirty. And we will look over the information that we requested. And if there's nothing else, thank you for coming and we're adjourned.